It is Tuesday, 12:25 in the House of this is the Council of Session Order. Tonight we have almost the full council, we're missing everybody.
We're missing only one person, that would be the mayor. His absence is excused. And we'll move on to our land acknowledgement. We, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Massacre Creek. The Squawson Indian Tribe and the Squawson Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who were absorbed or relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. And with that, can I get a motion for tonight's agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as published?
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion about tonight's agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously, we have an agenda for tonight. And the first item on our agenda is public comment. It looks like we didn't have any written comment to add to the record. Is there anybody in this room wishing to address this council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. First business item on our agenda tonight is the City of Lacey Branding and Style Guide. It looks like Ty will be presenting. Ty is our Communications Manager and Donna not going to present with you tonight? Okay.
Okay, thanks for having me here tonight. I am, of course, here to talk about the branding guide, which is fun for nerds like me. I love talking about branding and communication stuff, so I'm happy to do that. It's not a very long presentation because I'm just going to run through different elements of our guide. And for clarity, we don't really need any action from the council tonight. There's not like an affirming vote or anything on our branding guide. It's just for informational purposes and to show that we're making some progress on a couple of things. With that, just a reminder that this branding guide is actually aligned in the City Communications Plan, started in 2022. The plan has that we want to establish a branding guide, including a policy for our logo. And we've talked about policy for a logo with this body several times. And I'll touch more on that in just a little bit. A little bit of background here, why do we need a branding guide? Well, a good branding guide helps make your image really recognizable. What is the brand of the city? Are we being clear, are we being consistent? And really, a good brand gives you a vibe that's greater than the words or the images that you see. So that's very important, is giving that perception and that vision. So for us, we want the city to have a good professional identity. When people see the city documents or images, we want them to recognize the city immediately, which is really important for trust as well. And for consistency, that's really the biggest part of branding, is establishing some consistency. So we want to make sure all communications look the same, people get the same vibe, the same feeling when they're reading something. And that could be on the website, it could be a document, it could be a piece of apparel, a logo. It could be a video, it could be a speech, all of these things are part of a brand. So a branding guide itself, the guide itself lays out rules and guidance for staff to follow so that they're always being consistent. And it could also be provided by, provided to people outside the city, whether they're contractors or other partners and things. So they could also get our image correct when they're talking about us. So what is in our guide? Well, the council doesn't really need a lesson on branding here. I'm not going to go through every single page of the guide, but I will talk about some of the different elements in our guide. And I'll just give a brief description of the elements here and provide a few key details. So general guides have things about logos, colors, fonts, image standards, stuff like that. Graphics, very important, so there's many things in a standard guide. Now, for our guide, we have all of these things and more. For starters, we go into our brand identity, so our city mission, our vision, our core values. These are all things that were established by the council and are also in other documents and other plans as well. We go into our logo, we've talked about the logo many times here, but our guide provides information on sizing, on variations of our logo, which I'll speak to in a second. Other city logos that we have, including the police department or the museum, excuse me, proper spacing of our logo, that kind of thing. So some different variations of our logo, we've got a horizontal version, we've got a black and white version. Those are all established for our various deans. We've also got a white version that goes on the color background. And we have a rare chase card round version that we can use sparingly as well. However, the logo I really want to draw some attention to is this version. So council asked for a logo that includes Washington in it. So here we have a version that says City of Lacey, Washington. And this version's kind of a mixed, it's really a mix of our logo plus the city seal. The intent is for it to be used when the material is intended for an audience that is outside of the state and maybe not familiar with where Lacey is. That also helped to reduce any confusion with other Lacy's in the United States. So this is Lacey, Washington. So this logo specifically should only be used for really a narrow band of things. I honestly, I think of this as the council exclusive logo that we can use on apparel and things like that. So we don't make this logo available to staff as a whole, it's only by request of the comms team. So if somebody wants it, then they'll have to talk to us about it and we'll think about proper usage of that logo. Some other items in the brand guide, we go over different fonts. So we have Open Sands and Arial and Calibri as some of our main fonts. And all these fonts are fully accessible. There's also a section on images. We want pictures of the community that look great and show that people are active. We don't want people using stock photos or AI images or anything like that to describe the city. There's a full section in our guide on shooting video, how to capture video correctly, how to use graphics on video, that kind of thing. Also, a section on colors that includes the four colors that are a part of our main logo that I talked about. But we also have a secondary color palette, so people can be a little more expanded in their documents that they're creating and feel good about how things look. Of course, icons too, don't make icons too big or too small, make sure they're things that people understand. And lastly, we have accessibility sprinkled into every section of this branding guide. And we want our colors, our graphics, our images, all to be something that everybody can understand, no matter the detail on it. Another section I'd like to highlight is we put a section on maps into the brand guide, which is not something that everybody does. And the reason why is we worked with every department to ask them, what is it that you need in a guide? How is it that you do your work? And how do you go about communicating with the public or communicating internally? And one thing that we do is we throw a lot of maps around the city. But some of the maps look different from others and some of them are, the colors are off and some are a little too small. We really wanted some consistency around that. So working with the fine folks in Public Works, we got kind of a rough standard on what maps should look like. And we started to exercise this a little bit better and all of a sudden, all the maps were coming out consistently and people can read them. And they had a great font and the colors were understandable. So again, consistency is the name of the game here. So that information is always the same in every format, no matter what map you look at. You're going to understand that blue means this, red means this, and how that works out. So I'm happy that we were able to come up with a standard for some of our maps. So that's what's in the branding guide. A couple notes on some related documents. We're finalizing a writing guide that accompanies this branding guide. And that writing guide goes into how staff can keep their writing consistent across all of the city departments. We want to communicate in something that's called plain language, which is a set of standards. It also goes over special grammar and punctuation rules that are special to the city and a number of other things too. So makes that writing consistent. Also, related to that is web governance, which is also in production right now, which goes over outlines for web pages, how to write stuff for the web, other things pertaining to our look and feel. And that's another document that's complimentary to our branding guide. So all three of these documents go together and really help to bring our look and feel into a more consistent place. So some next steps from here, we want to work on updating our communication materials as stated in the comms plan. We've actually already started doing this. So we are working on our templates and our documents and our website and lots of things. Many of these things are things that the council's already seen. But we want to bring everything up to these standards and make sure that we're having our best look going forward. And we don't have the logo with the mountain with the lines on it running around in all, any new documents. With that, happy to take any questions, but I do want to give a big thanks to all the departments for lending some personnel through this entire process. And having that feedback was very, very important for us to get this right and get everybody on the same page. Also, thanks to the comms team for working on this as a group. We did a lot of editing and a lot of work to put this together. Especially thanks to Donna for doing all the formatting and putting the final document itself together. So happy to take any questions if council has any.
Questions, council? Comments from council?
I know in the presentation, you've asked that people not fiddle with the colors. But would you ever intentionally make a specific, like special color logo? For like a holiday event or a special campaign on behalf of the city? You've got the blue and you've got the green, but.
Yeah, decorate the trees, like Christmas trees or something like that.
Yeah.
I'm willing to humor that in a very restrictive way, case by case basis. Yeah.
Ms. Merrick-Hawkes?
So part of this is already being implemented, but when, when do you envision that the whole thing will be rolled out and staff trained?
They'll be, honestly, this is kind of the last stop on the station. After this meeting, I hope to take the draft off the front of the document and call it good. But I'm happy to reach out and work with any of the staff and any of the departments. To be honest, we've already been working with all the staff that would primarily use this. But we'll continue to have those meetings and talk with folks.
Great.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. This will most likely prevent any vendors from going rogue and taking creative license with our stuff. And have you, have you tried to embroider any of this stuff or?
I have seen our new logo on many patches. I have seen it on, on some apparel and on hats and things like that. We had a few challenges early on as people were adjusting to like, oh, this is, there's a bird here. How do I, how do I do this and how do I adjust this? But so far, we've overcome those challenges and things are rolling forward.
Okay, so it came out okay in the Stitch file and all that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, thank you so much for your report. If there's nothing else from the council? Okay. Our next, next agenda item is our permit fee schedule corrections and clarifications. And it looks like we have our building official and fire marshal presenting, Terry McDaniel. And Vanessa.
Okay, I think we're all here. Well, good evening, council. My name's Vanessa Dolby, Community Economic Development Director. And tonight I'm here with our building official and current planning economic development manager to talk about our amendments to the fee schedule. And these really fall into three buckets, and then I'll hand it off to talk about the details. But the first bucket is kind of fixing some errors that were in the last adopted schedule from March. The second bucket is recognizing either existing application processes and procedures that are within our code that we don't have a fee attached to and/or removing those that actually no longer exist. And then the last bucket is really looking at amendments to the resolution language itself to add some additional clarity to how we adjust fees as well as how we charge fees. So with that, I'll hand it off with Terry.
Good evening, council. First work session since being in the role, super exciting. Can we go to attachment two?
I can attempt to do that. Can I do it?
Yeah, yeah, that works.
Okay.
Can you see that? So starting out with the fee table, you can see at the top, we have our building permit, commercial, IBC fee schedule. And then just below that is our building permit residential fee schedule. We identified that they were flipped and reversed when we presented them back in March of last year. So kind of flipping between these two, I'll walk you guys through it. Currently, right now, in our commercial building code, a project less than $10,000 is $191 is the fee you'd pay. $10,000 to $25,000 is $573, and then less than $50,000 is $765. If you drop down to that IRC fee table, you see we just have a less than $50,000 permit fee and that's $839. So for residential, that would include a patio cover, a deck, pergola. Somebody would pay $839 for that permit. And then if you had a plan review fee, that would be around $1,210 on that review. So we identified that the intent was those needed to be flipped and reversed. Typically, in commercial, you have more inspections, therefore the higher permit fee. You can go anywhere from three to five times to a commercial project. Whereas a residential, you're only going maybe one or two times. Questions on that? Moving on. So I'm going to skip around here, Sarah's going to talk about some other things in this table. But design review, commercial mixed use fees, those were copied and aired. You can see they got, get smaller as the project value increases. So we want to correct that. And then the development regulation text amendment, that was also copied and aired. So we wanted to change that as well, propose that. And then the environmental impact statement, the, we identified it didn't have the per hour of staff time included behind that. It just said $173, so.
Could anybody cash in?
We haven't had an environmental impact statement, which is a good thing because these are really, really hefty land use applications. And that's why we do a per hour fee. They can be extremely complex or fairly simple, but it gives us that flexibility to charge what's appropriate.
That was kind of long. Was anyone affected by any of these or did we catch it all before they, any of it was finalized?
For, for, well, we can talk about each one specifically, but these fees have been in effect since last March. So I think the answer technically to your question is yes. That specific one is a no. But the building permit fees, as Terry was just speaking to, there's been many applications that have come in that we've had to assess the adopted fee even though they were accidentally flipped. So we're back here to fix that.
Any complaints?
The expensive residential permit, we have received some complaints on that. So we're really hopeful that we can bring that resolution back to drop that fee back down to the hundred, like little over $100 price.
Prorate them back.
What was that?
Will we prorate them back?
We can't refund the fees because they have been charged and they were in the adopted fee schedule. So it will just be new applications that come in that will be affected.
With that, I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Yes, so. administrative errors that Terry talked about. The community economic development staff is also working, currently working on some code amendments to streamline permitting processes. An extension of what we did last year with 5290 when we worked on permit timelines. At that time, we talked about moving development.
Moving development procedures outside, out of the development guidelines on Public Works Standards Manual and moving them into the Lacey Municipal Code. So our staff is currently working on that right now and grouping all of our development processes and procedures into one chapter. And with that work, there's also been, it's likely that there's going to be some new application processes and procedures where we'll need to include a new fee for those. And we have, for example, rezone with development application. And we have, for example, rezone with development application. And this would recognize some of the changes that we may see with adoption of our comprehensive, our new comprehensive plan and a future land use map, allowing a fee for a rezone with a development application. So that allows you to change the zone of your property if it's consistent with the future land use map. At the same time as moving through the land use application process, so it consolidates that application process. And that's what that fee would do. Additionally, as we're going through the development permit, the permitting processes, we'd like to clarify that the limited administrative, what types of applications the limited administrative review fee actually covers. There's a number of different types of applications, like a temporary use permit, limited administrative street merchant permit, code interpretations, administrative variance fees that are covered by that limited administrative review fee. So including a footnote with that fee would help identify what that fee applies to. So we've recommended that change as well. And then in addition to new permit types, there are some existing land use permits that weren't identified in the fee schedule. Development agreements, for one, it doesn't have a fee associated with it. And similar to environmental impact statements, those are things that take significant amount of staff time to accomplish. And so adding a fee at $173 per hour is what's recommended on the fee schedule. And then also cleaning up the fees that are listed that we don't actually have a process for anymore. That when we've adopted codes, that application is not available to apply for anymore. For example, a village center application, a site plan minor amendment, limited administrative wetland reviews and wetland review administrative processes. Those are things we can't, we don't even process anymore. There's not an application available to them. So cleaning up the fee schedule to eliminate those is also something that we would recommend with this resolution as well. With that, I'll turn it back over to, if there's questions about that or Vanessa, turn it back over to Vanessa.
Any questions on that second bucket as I was going in?
There's a lot in there.
Yeah.
So when they go to the code, they'll be able to see the fees there as opposed to having to bounce back and forth from development guidelines to code. Does that sound right?
So, sorry, the fees won't be in the code per se, but the development, the LM, or the development procedures will be in the Lacey Municipal Code rather than in the development guidelines and public works standards manual. And then the fees will be associated with those applications identified in the code itself.
So we're just aligning our fee schedule to match the land use applications that would exist in the code. So if there is a pathway in the code, we have a fee associated with that land use application.
Okay.
Or removing if there isn't a pathway in the code.
How, how soon should we expect this to come back before us?
Oh, the, the chapter one changes. What's our schedule for that?
So they're getting ready to, we're moving forward to the planning commission for the work session on August 27th. And then hopefully they can recommend to a public hearing towards the end of September. That would put us in front of council in October for a work session in front of council on the development procedures title.
And we are trying to align that with the updates the public works is doing with their manual as well. So we can remove a chapter and have two clean documents. So hopefully those will come together if we, if we do it right.
Will any of these changes make it more complicated or more expensive to build?
I think it will streamline the process and actually make it easier. Okay, I, two, a third bucket to address. And that is amendments to the resolution itself. If in, if and when council gives us direction to bring that back before them for adoption. And those are two separate recitals that would be within the resolution. Currently in the adopted resolution, it provides a pathway for inflation factors for these fees that are related to our ASME contract in terms of the COLA. If that doesn't get ratified in time for our updates, it then falls back to an option B, which is related to a CPI schedule. The resolution doesn't quite have enough detail within it to clarify exactly which CPI, within exactly which dates we would utilize. So we, as you all may be aware, we actually had to use our option two this year to update our fee schedule using that CPI. So the requested amendment would be to provide that clarity within that recital as a part of the resolution so that we provide that increase consistently year over year, if it's necessary. So that's the first one. And then the second one is to clarify what fees are paid and at what time. So that would be an amendment to the recital to basically make it clear that you pay the fees that are in place at the time you make the payment. So that you don't pay a fee from an estimate that we provided three years ago. You don't pay a future fee. You pay what's in place at the time when you make that payment. So that would be the second amendment to the recital.
So the CPI that we're going to use for inflation adjustment and/or a fee increase is, 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 are, are we going to have like a standard of like, if it comes out here, then you bring it to council and say, hey, or are you looking to automatically just use that to, to make the determination?
That's correct. So option two there. So the way that the recitals are currently drafted is that we use actually the fee increases related to the ASME contracts, the union contracts, so that the increase in costs are correlated to the COLA that's paid to employees to process and review those permits. So that percentage matches. The challenge is we have an option B if that contract is not approved or ratified by the union and we don't have a number to be able to do that assessment on, then our fallback or our safety net is to use CPI in this recital. The way the recital is currently drafted, it just says use the CPI. It doesn't provide clarity. So what we're asking is that, let me hang on, I'm going to have to read this so that I do it right. Shall be, so that the increase will be based on the first half consumer price index for the Seattle area instead of just CPI. So we know we're using the first half of the year. We know we're using the Seattle area CPI. So that is really a fallback safety net provision, but it provides consistency though. If we have to use that year over year, we are using the same metric versus coming up with a metric every time.
It does make sense. It's kind of fun, but.
It's getting a little bit in the weeds, but so you don't have a contract, so you don't have the rates from the CBA. You go with the CPI. That's what we did this year.
Correct.
And it was hard because we didn't have a specific CPI listed in, in the policy.
Correct.
Is there ever any sort of reconciliation? Or if it's like you have to make the decision on what the rates are at that time, you set it based on CPI. You don't go back once you settle the contract and line things up.
Correct, correct.
Whatever it is today.
Yep, and that, and the fees are effective July 1st. And the, it says in the recitals that the contract has to be ratified by June 1st. So that gives us time in the background to update the technology to apply the fees accordingly.
This is a bit of a far-fetched what if question. But like, what if the economy gets so bad that the city can't afford to give the cost of living COLA adjustments? So if that was at zero, would that freeze the rates or would we then turn to the?
Correct. We would not increase the fees because the COLA did not come up. Yep.
Well, let's hope we're never there, but, okay.
I think we're, we're comfortable with this direction. And I look forward to seeing you guys bring that before us.
Absolutely, we will. Thank you. And, and then we, CED's rolling right into the next agenda.
Yeah, you guys got one more. It looks like we're going to be looking at the 2021 International Series of Building Codes. So team?
Yeah, so little background on this. In June of 2023, staff had come to council for guidance on adopting the International Series of Building Codes. It was scheduled to be adopted in November. It ended up being pushed back further into March. Went into effect March 15th of 2024. In that time, we've had new staff come on board and staff retire. And so we're here to make it right tonight. We, per Title 51 of the Washington Administrative Code, all jurisdictions in the state of Washington are required to adopt and enforce the state building codes by local ordinances. Any jurisdiction is further allowed to amend the state building codes, provide the amendments, do not reduce the minimum performance standards of the codes. We immediately rolled with it in March, March 15th. We have been using the 2021 codes as intended. And we recommend adoption of the 2021 International Series of Building Codes, including appendixes, chapters E, G, I, J, Q, and T in accordance with Title 51 of the WAC.
I'm glad you made that distinction, that we have been in compliance with these codes ever since they came out. It just never made it before us to, to, to adopt them, so.
Compliant in every aspect except us.
Yeah.
Making, taking action on the ordinance.
I wasn't going to say that, but yes.
This always frustrates me. It's the most pointless thing in the world that we even take a vote on this.
Right, because.
The state says you're going to do this.
Right.
And there's absolutely no reason for this council to take action on it, except for the state says we need to.
And we've had this conversation so many times.
Yeah, and it's always been pointless and we'll do it once again.
And we'll do it again.
Well, we, we appreciate the direction and we will bring in ordinance back before the council.
Thank you. Moving on. It looks like our next agenda item is our comprehensive plan series, our community input and draft comprehensive plan. Looks like our community planning manager, Ryan Andrews, will be presenting. It looks like he's bringing Hans with him. Good to see you both.
Good evening. Just give us one second to get the technology figured out here and we'll be good.
As Hans blows my mind with technology, I'll, I'll just kick this off. This just kind of marks the next phase in our comprehensive plan update. And we are really excited to be before you, kind of having this conversation and providing you an update of where we're at. So I don't think I bought Hans enough time.
I'll go. So we recently released a draft of our comprehensive plan. We are now at the point where we're starting to see some light at the end of the tunnel. And so we've, we've released a draft to the community back in July. And Hans is going to go through kind of our efforts to get the word out and some of the, the feedback that we've been receiving. We, we have kind of a key question as part of that feedback that we're asking the council tonight to weigh in on. And then we'll go through some next steps at the end. So with that, I think Hans has got it ready. He's saddled up and ready to go. So I'll turn it over to Hans.
Good evening. Hans, and really this is not my magical abilities. It's, it's the clerk. So thank you all for your support. I'm just here to hit the over arrow. So this is going to be an update on the comprehensive plan. A lot of this is going to be refresher. A lot of these things you guys have seen before, but we did want to bring this back to you at regular increments, just to let you know how we're doing, where, where we're at in that process and what's coming next. So as far as planned phases, we are in what we're calling Phase Three of this update. So Phase One was really that visioning exercise that started in 2024, really broad-based outreach to the community. Just kind of open-ended questions, really looking to the community for that initial guidance. Once we collected that initial feedback, we went into Phase Two, which we're calling Community Priorities, which is really just distilling all that feedback down, kind of creating buckets with it, common themes, kind of actionable items from there. And then from there, we actually developed draft goals and policies intended to reflect that community feedback. And then in Phase Three, we re-released those goals and policies back to the community in draft form, really in, in kind of a, did we get it right? Did we hear you kind of capacity? Just really just trying to, getting that confirmation every time we take a step forward in this update process, bringing the community along, really making sure that we are in fact moving in the right direction throughout this process. And then Phase Four is going to be that final plan. So we're going to move into that in the, the last quarter of this year really, but we'll get into more on that later. So this graphic here should look relatively familiar with you guys. Early on in 2024, we went to city council, we went to the youth council, we went to the planning commission and asked for guidance on how we should be engaging with the community. And we created this diagram here that on the left side would be kind of more of a virtual online form of engagement. And then on the right would be more in-person, kind of one-on-one conversations direct with community members. And then at the top you had attending events, so that's going out into the community and attending events that are already taking place. And then on the bottom we have hosting events. So actually a lot of times here in this room, inviting the community to come in and attend events that we're hosting, all of which are really intended to engage with the community, but just creating different avenues and opportunities for that to take place. You guys were right in the middle there as far as a little bit of everything as far as what you're looking for, so. But, so as part of the kind of next slides, we'll run through all the different types of engagement we did. But we did try to really break it up and ensure that we did have a good balance of each one of these types of engagement and opportunities for the community to participate and provide feedback throughout the entirety of this process. So yeah, really starting in July of 2024 is when we started the community engagement process. And that's going to continue to run through the end of this year, up until that point of adoption. But really this slide talks a lot about what we did in July. So we attended the South Sound Barbecue Festival actually for the second time, two years in a row. We like to attend that one because it does tend to draw a very kind of Lacey-centric crowd, which is positive. So when we're trying to get that feedback about Lacey-specific things, that seems to be a good one to go to. We attended a lot of different depot night markets. We went to Lacey in Tune at Hunter Park. Vanessa actually went to the Master Builders. We did a couple other pop-up events. We also utilized our front counter. We have a lot of space there. So we actually put up a lot of boards that we were taking to these events when they weren't out and about in the community. So anybody that was here for any number of reasons could also actually look through what we're working on at that point in time between visits or counter activities, whatever they have going on. And then also distribution, we push this information out through all of our communication channels that we really have available to us. So city website, we actually created a comprehensive plan specific website. We did all of our different social media, news articles, Lacey Life. We created a couple different videos about this update process featuring Vanessa. So that was another avenue that we used to try to kind of make this more of an engaging and interesting project. This does get into a lot of kind of denser material, denser topics. So any way that we can kind of liven it up, make it more interactive, interesting, and get it out to the community is really what we were pursuing as part of this. And then we also launched two different online engagement platforms, and I'll get into those in a second. But one of them was called Conveyo. And that was really a breakdown of our goals and policies. So it gave community members the opportunity to actually provide comments in, within the text draft language. It also allowed for other community members to see those comments. So it created an opportunity for a little bit of dialogue, so you could provide a thumbs up or a thumbs down or provide additional comments. So it also, on the staff side, is helpful because it really is a way to provide that targeted feedback exactly where community members want it to go. And then it also saves us if, you know, maybe four or five different people have the same style of comment. Instead of each one of them writing it out, maybe it's just one comment with five thumbs up or something like that. So it, it helps streamline that, but also creates that opportunity for community dialogue. And then we also launched a story map to run through our draft future land use and zoning updates. A lot of those we brought to you guys already, so when we get into that, that should look pretty familiar. But it's again a lot more of an interactive, visual-oriented, graphic-heavy way to convey information and explain the types of things that we're looking at as part of this update. But as far as the in-person events, in July, we had around 275 booth visits. And we're primarily measuring that based on how many different items we gave away at those booths. This in, for 2025, the conversations that we were having at those events was a lot more of, did we get it right? Last year this time, it was a lot more of tell us all of your feedback, any ideas, thoughts, anything you want to share with us. This time it's a lot more, all right, we've taken a stab at clarifying what we've heard so far. And this is more of a confirmation process that we want to make sure that we did in fact hear you correctly and captured that feedback and it is reflected in the goals and policies that we're looking to roll out. So a couple different photos from that. And then as far as outreach by the numbers, so just high-level kind of information that we have for you guys tonight. Email distribution list, we got sent out over 4,000 different emails to different community groups, individuals, interested parties. Social media, we had around 10,000 different people that interacted with our posts in some form or fashion. Business outreach, we did just under 2,000 different newsletter contacts. We had a couple different video publications, just over 100 different views on those. And then total outreach, so starting back in 2024, June, July of 2024, running all the way through to today, we have estimated that we have around 60,000 community contacts as part of this process to date. And that, all of those numbers we anticipate are going to continue to grow through the end of this year. At this point, I'm actually going to see if I can stop sharing and then reshare. At this point, I'm actually going to see if I can stop sharing and then reshare, so bear with me a second here. That's a weird graphic.
Hans, while you pull that up, I'll just add, even though that was just a few slides, it's worth taking a moment to thank our communications department for their efforts to put all the posts out and the notifications out. And really, the engagement events was more than the folks you see sitting at the table here. It was really all hands on deck and community economic development, all of our planners, community, our economic development department, all working together to get out into all those different community events. So lots of team effort.
Yeah, looking at it was just, I mean, I guess that was like the last five minutes, just talking about all the places we engaged and all the different avenues and so on. So a very comprehensive, nearly exhaustive outreach program, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's definitely been a pretty significant team effort. So this is the Conveyo platform that I was talking about earlier. This is where community members could go and actually provide comments directly on the draft policies and goals that we've outlined so far based on previous community feedback. You'll see that there's introduction, and then it's also broken out just by comprehensive plan element. So there's greenhouse gas emissions, transportation, land use, utilities. And each one of those has a set of goals and policies that people were actually able to explore, read about, and provide feedback. So scrolling down here, you can actually see those little yellow ones on some of those pages. Those are all comments that we've received from the community on those specific comments. So that was one of the platforms that we used. I'm not gonna go into all of this, but if you guys haven't had the opportunity yet, this is, so we're no longer accepting comments, but it is still live, so it's out there and available for anybody to review and read all of those comments. So transparency was a big part of what we're all about as part of this update. So that is all kind of part of the record that we've created and available for anybody to view at any time. So it's worth checking out. And then we'll see if, just by clicking, yep, okay. And then this is the story map that I was referencing earlier. So this really does a pretty deep dive on the draft future land use map that we've created. We brought that, brought that map to you guys a couple times through this process. But it breaks that out into a couple different, let's see how the navigation is here, subsections. So it goes into future land use 101 and just kind of describes what that is, why that's important, why it's helpful for the city. And then it actually goes into, I'm not great at using the trackpad here, but it actually breaks down the different types of future land use designations that we have, so. And it does that in a map format, so you can actually zoom around to the community and actually see what's going on, click on different zones and learn more about them. So taking what arguably could be considered kind of more of a dry subject and trying to make it a little bit more interesting, a little bit more interactive, get people to really get involved in what we're doing and provide feedback. And I will note that all of the commenting on this, again, has been turned off because we're past that phase. But when this was live as part of that period, there were multiple different opportunities along the way as people are learning about it to provide feedback. And we got a good amount of participation and feedback through that as well, so. And then moving into.
Hans, you had a question?
Yeah, for sure.
Did we get any age demographic information about who was commenting?
So we did, so with the, in 2024, when we first did the kind of robust, larger push online, we did do demographic-related data, and we did do more of a format that kind of forced people through that. For this round of updates, we still had those questions available and asked for that feedback. And we had kind of a window that when you first access these sites presents that demographic data, but we didn't require as much participation there. So we got less demographic data on this second time around as we did the first, but we definitely did still create a place for that to take place and ask people to provide that information.
Do you know offhand roughly what the participation rate was?
Demographic or just?
Yeah, people who bothered to respond to the demographic questions. Like 30% or 10% or 60%?
Yeah, I don't have those numbers right away, but we will be back as part of this process. We can definitely bring that information at that time.
Basically, the way it was presented was it was presented as a pop-up. And so anybody could click the X and X-out if they didn't want to submit their demographic information. So at this point, it was highly optional. And so we'll go back, check the numbers and see what we got. But we did a much more deeper dive as part of our initial steps, even down to like mapping out in or around Lacey where the representation was coming from. So we wanted to make sure that that was the case. But you know, the feedback that we got here was representative of the community at large. So if you go through the comments, and we'll be back, we'll talk about kind of next steps and how we'll bring this back to the council. You know, the people that we were getting comments from, and they were welcome to identify themselves, and many of them did, were the Olympia Master Builders, the Thurston Climate Action Team, people that have been involved in the comp plan process throughout. So you know, these were familiar faces, you know, that we were getting comments from throughout this process.
Thank you.
So the zoning consistency goes into some of the zoning consolidations that we talked about, met with you guys previously on. But it is a little bit more of a mapping tour, so it actually gives an explanation of what we're talking about and then zooms into areas within the community where that change could potentially take place. And then it also links to our code, so it really tries to simplify the information as much as possible and give that kind of visual representation of what we're actually talking about on the ground. And then we also had some community rezones, if my mouse will work. So we also, as part of this process, we went out to the community and asked for potential rezones requests. We got quite a few of those. And then some of those were carrying forward as part of this for additional review. So all of those are also mapped out with information on them and a description of what the request was and how it would impact the adjacent parcels and things like that. And then we also had a few zoning code text updates. And it goes into detail on that, and it also links to, say, like the planning commission meeting where we discussed those. So actually, people can read about them, but also view those meetings and actually read all of the additional attachments and material that went along with those. So really, you can do as much of a deep dive on any of these subjects as you want through this platform. So it's a little bit of a self-guided choose-your-venture in that sense, that people can kind of skim through it and get the high-level cliff notes or really dig deep and kind of find all the little topics that we dug through before getting to these recommendations.
How long will it stay up?
One more time?
How long will it stay up?
So this is, can run through the end of the, this process and even beyond that. We currently have it live on the comprehensive plan website, and it's available for embedded to view. So it is currently up, but we don't have a end date for when this is scheduled to come down right now. So it's a good resource right now.
Just to reiterate, we're not taking comments or feedback at this point. That was for the month of July. So at this point, it's live, but the ability to provide comment and feedback is closed at this point. The next opportunity will be through the planning commission public hearing process, and we'll talk about that a little bit when we get to next steps.
But you can more than see all the comments.
Yeah, correct.
All right. And then, so this is one slide right now. We are currently working through all the feedback that we've received through this, through the month of July, really. But as kind of a high-level, early takeaway summary slide of the type of feedback that we've received so far, we've had around 2,726 site visits between those two platforms from the community. Of those, around 8.6% chose to provide feedback in some form or another. That is down from last year, but, and we're actually view that as a positive in the sense that we're assuming that means that we're getting it right. If there was a lot of feedback at this stage, that would probably be more of a concern, that it means that we still have a lot more work to do and that we're missing key details that weren't reflected in the goals and policies. But with the amount of visits that we're getting compared to the amount of people that are still electing to provide feedback after that, it is, it is less than what we did early on in the project, which is what we're looking for. And then at a high level, just as far as comment by type, we had around 20% provide comments that kind of fall into that concern or area of concern. About 5% were just general questions. 50% fell into that kind of general suggestions category. And then 25 or so were just kind of general statements of support, so.
So I'm interested in the 19.5% concern rate. And, and what are their concerns? What worries people?
Yeah, so we are currently working through that right now, and we're gonna bring that, those results back to you guys. But this is, Conveyo, one of the things that it does is it does just kind of a general text analysis of the tone of voice typically that's used in the responses given, and then it gives us this breakout. And then it assigns kind of a neutral to positive to negative score to those comments. So a lot of what this breakdown is, is just kind of showing where in that spectrum these, the kind of the tone of voice falls. But as far as the concerns, we do have one question that Ryan's actually gonna speak to you guys about. It's more of a general topic that's gonna cover all of the, kind of the approach that we take with all of our goals and policies. But a lot of the other stuff is very kind of targeted or specific. So examples like we're talking about walking, but don't include references to biking in a statement or something like that. So it's, it's specific line item kind of critiques a lot of times that are pretty easy to address, but don't really change the general intent or the meaning behind a goal or policy is what we're finding.
And concerns can be broadly categorized, too. Not, not everything, not all the feedback that we get is comprehensive plan-related. For example, a concern could be, well, I have a concern that Lacey doesn't have a community pool. And that's not necessarily something we can address through this process.
Right.
So you know, some of it, keep in mind, this is like, these are very broad categories, and we are now as staff going through and filtering, okay, what are those that rise to the level of needing to be addressed in an updated goal or policy?
Can you get back to us, though, with more information on that? Because I'm very interested in hearing more about what the concerns are.
Sure.
Yeah, and we, I think we have it slated for September, early September.
September 9th is what I'm.
September 9th. So we'll have that combed through each and every single one of those comments identified, where, where we might see changes, whether we can address it through this process or not, analysis completed for that presentation.
Yeah, and with that, I'm actually gonna hand it over to Ryan.
Yeah, so as we were going through the feedback and preparing for tonight, we came across one item from the Thurston Climate Action Team that was, I'll say, a fairly strong concern, if we're talking about concerns. And really, the statement that they made was that in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, there is language that is kind of more mandating stuff, requiring things, those kinds of things. And so the concern is, you know, from their end, that the language, and we checked in with the council very early on this, and you really liked and appreciated language that was supportive. And you know, that kind of thing, because it gave us a lot more flexibility than things that were more like required and those kinds of things. And so we wanted to check in with the council tonight and see if we could get some feedback on, you know, whether we continue with the approach that we've, you know, the directive that we were given a while back to be more flexible and suggestive rather than requiring. And so an example, just one example, and this is throughout the comments that we received from Thurston Climate Action Team, is, an example policy is in greenhouse gas reduction, consider prioritizing the use of lower carbon building materials in new construction, et cetera. So the word consider, which is suggestive, right? You know, consider doing this. If you look at the TCMP, the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, there's language in a very similar or related policy that says require. And this example is new local government facilities and other public buildings to demonstrate green building practices, for permitting incentives, offer streamlined permitting, those kinds of things. And so we just wanted to check in with you, get your feedback on, should we continue down the path of being more flexible and being more suggestive in the language, rather than being more kind of mandating or requiring? And so with that.
Councilmember Greenstein.
Sure. So I mean, and we did discuss this early on, as you said, and for me, nothing's changed. I still, I support the suggestive language rather than the required language. I'm not a big fan of using the stick when we don't have to. I think the carrots, the way to go, is often as possible.
Councilmember Vasquez.
I'm of the opposite opinion, and in part because we are not meeting our climate goals. We're not meeting our goals to reduce carbon emissions. Like, report after report after report suggests that we're not on track to meet the goals that we set for our community. So our language is currently permissive. It feels like we're not moving fast enough to try to address some of these issues. And we can only control what we can control, right? And I'm not a fan of directing every single new piece of construction has to meet goals. But some of this language is like, what is Lacey going to do for itself? Like, what are we going to do for our own, like, city buildings? I think we should have more restrictive or more rigid language for what we, what the standards are that we set for ourselves to meet our goals.
Anybody else?
I would just add another comment to that. The problem with the restrictive, even on the city project, is that we don't know what the economy is gonna look like every time we put more of these requirements and we raise the cost of everything we do. So I think we have to be really careful in raising the price of everything we build by putting in very prescriptive language. You know, the public still has to pay for it, right? And clearly, there's, you know, there's some economic concerns. So I think that's gotta be something we're very careful about.
Well, I think I fall somewhere in the middle between these two. But I would say, in terms of rising costs, the very climate change that we're trying to address here is going to hugely increase the costs of things. So I'd like to take that part out of the equation. I am also more of a carrot-than-a-sticker type, but I think we can't afford to be wishy-washy anymore. You know, to kind of sort of, maybe it would be a good idea if, you know, if you feel like it and want to do it. You know, I think we need to be a little more direct. And, but to say why? I mean, you know, if you do this, this is how either you will benefit, the community benefits, the planet benefits. You know, why we think it's important. I will share, I was at a Sierra Club event last week and had a chance to speak there. And the fellow who introduced me was highly complimentary about Lacey's comprehensive plan and the climate element. But even before, I mean, talking about the work we did in the 2021 version of it, where we adopted the climate mitigation.
Plan.
Plan, but you know, right into our comprehensive plan. And so, I mean, they were talking about, he was talking about, you guys are like light-years ahead of your neighbors. And so it was really nice feedback to hear from them.
Councilmember Stammen, do you have something?
I don't know. I think somewhere between, you know, yes and no, or just stay away from the extremes. That's, that's what I would suggest.
Yeah, I would say I'm kind of in the middle for a different reason. But it's just if we change our language on this and we get very specific, we kind of like, like with the branding guide, we kind of gotta do it across the board with all of our language, and I think that's kind of a slippery slope to go down. You know, so unless we have like a specific thing that we're trying to accomplish with the, you know, the low-carbon building material, and we know exactly what that is, I would just kind of be hesitant on, you know, requiring or demanding or how, you know, making that really specific language on any of it, unless we have a specific thing that we're trying to really push, and we have a specific policy we're trying to push.
I mean, I think there is an opportunity to look at the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan recommendations and where possible, line our language up with that. So we don't have to guess. Like, we, we're already signed on to a partnership that has some of this language already developed. And our Lacey language is softer than the TCMP language.
So, you know, we've looked at the TCMP language, we've looked at their graphs and charts, you know, and where we are in relation to some of those goals. And I know that, you know, there's a big gap between, you know, our current trajectory and where they, you know, were expected to be, I think it was 2050. One of the things I like about the softer, general, gentler language is it makes us appealing to develop in. And I think it's, it's one of the reasons why we continue to have development here as opposed to people going to develop in other cities. When I look at things like require, and I have to think about supply chains, right? I have to think about if, if, if they're, if they're paying more for this material because it's such a new, you know, material. I know that that, that cost is gonna be transferred to the homeowner, to the buyer, as it goes through the developer. And one of my fears that I've had in this community for a long time is that we are going to price people out from being able to live here. We're gonna be turned into some exclusive community. It's already $475, $500,000 just to, just to live here, right? And I know this because I have to tell people, sorry, you can't afford to live here because you don't qualify for enough money to buy a house. you don't qualify for enough money to buy a house in this community. You need to go some other community. And it's sad every time I have to tell somebody that, saying, you know, sorry, we, we just, you can't afford this. And so I, I, I am in favor of keeping this language a little more gentler for the time being because we do have a lot of people who would rather develop with us than develop with someone else. And it's really helped out our, our base and it's helped keep prices a little bit lower. And I know that it's going to cost a little bit towards our goal, but at the same time, it keeps us in livable space and livable price range. And, I mean, at the, I have been trying to get lower price point housing from the time I got onto this council, right? Smaller units. And, and as our international building codes, we're meeting them, you know, and, and, and what we're talking about is really exceeding them in such a way that, that it's, it could cost the residents of this, of this, of this city and, and make it so unaffordable that they end up just going somewhere else anyway, or cashing in and moving to another county or state or whatever the case may be. So it, you know, it looks like we have a few council member who agree with that and would say that we, we want to be the most builder friendly place that we can be so that we can keep our pricing down, so that we're more attractive, so that we continue to grow. We, I, if, if we were to go with some of this tougher language, I'd really want to know from developers that they can make this happen at a price point that would not price people out of this community.
So this is a great thread the needle option for us. So, so we will bring back details when we come to the next council meeting, but, you know, quick overview, I think your assessment is true. We got comments from the master builders that would be in contrary to this request. It would be the opposite side. So it would be, please keep it softer. The climate advocates are asking for more stringent language. So I think that when we go through them and we kind of comb through it, we can look at where it aligns with adopted policies. We do have a policy that talks about implementing the climate action, I'm going to get it wrong, the TC, TCMP. So we do have that in the comp plan. So we'll, we'll see what we can do to try to thread the needle a little bit on this when we bring it back to balance both of those, those interests. We will do, we will do our best and then we can tweak from there.
Please and thank you.
Yeah.
And just a couple of things real quick, and then we'll move on to next steps, is that understand that by the city already adopting the TCMP, that this language already exists. So keep that in mind. And then the second thing is oftentimes, these are high level goals and policies, and where the rubber meets the road is things like regulations or, you know, purchasing or things like when we're, you know, designing a new building or doing those kinds of things, that that's when these things come into play. So, you know, it, it sets the, the foundation for, for those decisions, but it's not necessarily the decision itself. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Well, if it goes into the, into this, then it is the decision.
It's the foundation for the decision, which then at some point could be referred to.
If you change it to require, then it becomes required.
It already, it already, I'll, I'll say it already says require. This, the city has already adopted the TCMP, which already says require. So keep that in mind.
Will do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. And so next steps, we are now transitioning from phase three, these draft policies, into phase four, the final plan. This means essentially, and I know we've talked about it before, you know, our, our comprehensive plan will be a fully online comprehensive plan, so it'll be essentially a website. So at this point, we are transitioning to an online platform for our comprehensive plan, working with a consultant to do that. And at this point, our timeline looks like the end of the year for adoption with the council. If you want to go to the next slide, Hans. So, you know, here we are, August 12th. Tomorrow night, August 13th, the Planning Commission will be combing through the community feedback. So we wanted to make sure that they had the opportunity to go through the, the goals and policies and the feedback received and provide any kind of amendments, suggest any amendments to essentially the council. So we'll be back September 9th to run through the, the comments received and then how we might address those through amended goals and policies. Those amended goals and policies then would go up on the website as essentially kind of like the public hearing draft. So let's talk about how we move towards that public hearing draft. We're going to, we're going to transition to this website. Planning Commission would then hold a public hearing sometime this fall. We also have some statutory requirements, some, some things we need to complete, including a, a notice to the State Department of Commerce, which is a 60-day process. We also need to do a review under the State Environmental Policy Act, so an environmental review of the document as well. Ultimately, this will return to you. Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the city council and this will be up for you for review and adoption before the end of this year. So with that, I think that's all the information we had to present tonight. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I think we've said it all. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the next item in our agenda. We are going to get a 2025 mid-year financial report from our finance director, Mr. Troy Wu.
Good evening, council. As I get started here, I'd like to thank my colleagues in the Communications Department and Community and Development Departments for ceding about an hour or two to the Finance Department. So I didn't expect to be here until about eight o'clock, so happy to have an extra hour.
Comedian in every.
You're welcome.
No, I think this will be probably briefer than what you've seen in the past. It's really going to focus on what we see in the future, not so much in terms of the details of what's happened so far. Do want to share some summary comments, of course, but you do have the full report in the, in the, in the council agenda. So we're going to focus on the general fund like we have in the past. Jumping right into expenditures, this is just the current expense fund. The general fund is made up of seven different funds, but this is the fund that contains the majority of the services, I think, that our citizens most identify with. So within the current expense fund, we spent about $9.5 million less than the same period last year. The primary difference is the difference in the amount that transfers that have occurred are primarily related to the police station. Last year, this fund transferred about $17.5 million of reserves for the, for the police station. That didn't occur again this year, but we did have about a $5.5 million transfer for Great Qo Park development. So that's really the offsets, about $12 million in, in one time of transfers. I do want to make just a few comments about the impact of labor within these funds. Every one of these is being impacted by increases to labor. You know, overall, for the general fund, labor's increased through the first half about 1.3 million. I do need to point out that the ASME contract, one of the biggest labor groups, was unsettled for 2025 through the first half of the year. That contract was just recently settled. We will have a retro pay for, I'm not sure if we're going to get that done in August or September, but, you know, majority of the year so far is going to be a retro pay that's not reflected in these numbers. Another change within this, these numbers is in the Police Department. You can see only an increase of about $68,000. Do need to remind the council that we're funding the five succession planning positions in the new Public Safety Tax Fund. So basically, five positions move from this fund to another. So that's not, that's a change within these numbers as well. So looking at your seven separate funds that make up your general fund, the overall mid-year decrease was 8.7. Again, transfers played a, a large role in this variance. I mean, you can see the current expense fund, the 9.5 from the previous slide. The current, the Criminal Justice Fund, last year, we transferred $1.6 million for the police station construction. That did not occur in 2025. And then the Street Fund, we transferred a million dollars from this fund into the Arterial Street Fund. And that million dollars of reserve that the council identified to go towards the Seventh and College Roundabout. So since we do have that developer agreement in place, we moved the money for that design of that project. Looking at the revenue side of the budget, again, this is just the current expense fund compared mid-year, comparing the two years, we had an increase of about $346,000. Most of this was in taxes. I do have a slide that does show the details of the changes in the major tax categories for this fund. I do want to point out in service charges, they're right in the middle of the table, a decrease of about $165,000. That's primarily a $281,000 decrease to plan check fees. We really look at this in terms of future development, so we definitely have a slowdown to kind of that development review process. So at this point, it's indicating that development will slow down or continue to slow down in Lacey. Other revenues, the last category presented here on the, on the, on the slide, a decrease of about $900,000. This is really made up of three different changes through mid-year. One is really purely an accounting function, about $400,000 adjustment to the valuation of our investments. So at the beginning of the year, or the end of the year, more accurately, we have to take a snapshot of the market valuation of investments. Again, it's really an accounting function. It's not a gain or loss that we do expect to actually realize, but to have proper valuation on our balance sheet, we have to make these entries. So again, $400,000 decrease to our investment valuations reflecting that number. We did actually have a $320,000 reduction to investment earnings, really just a reflection of decreasing rates or rates that had already decreased, as well as that big transfer we made from this fund into the building fund for the police station. So we have less principal that we're earning interest on. So again, about a $320,000 decrease from that impact. Kind of rounding out that $900,000 decrease, in 2024, we had about $225,000 higher in opium, opioid settlement receipts. So a little bit lower so far in 2025.
So if we wipe out the, the, the paper loss? Wow. Yeah.
About a half million in there.
Then we're at 850.
I'm looking at all the general fund revenue results. Overall, a $711,000 increase mid-year. You know, one of the big differences here is the Public Safety Fund. 2025 reflects a full year collection of sales tax where last year it was only, the tax went into effect April 1st, so that's the $430,000 increase there. When you do look at the, the tax overall, it's about $550,000 more than last year. So when you net out that new tax compared to that $710,000 increase, it's really only about $150,000 increase. So we're, we're just not seeing revenue growth happening like we've seen in the past few years.
So, so you said that this tax and it's with the amount we're, I, I guess my question is, is it, it is covering all five of those positions?
It is.
Completely.
It's covering nine positions plus your mobile outreach team contracts. So it's about 2.2 million is our projection and it's, it's definitely accomplishing the plan and then the, you know, the, you know, the discussion the council had and how to apply those funds. So, but again, it's about nine positions that this tax is funding.
So 2.2 stays in general? Okay, I was always wondering.
Um, here's the detailed tax side-by-side comparison. Again, about a million dollars more in 2025. About 60% of that is in property tax. At the end of the year, it's going to end up being exactly where projected. We don't collect more than we actually levy, so that will even out by the end of the year. So it's more of a timing issue more than anything. You do receive the sales tax report on a monthly basis, so at the mid-year, we were down about $124,000. Of course, you saw the July report, we had an actual increase. We've had two months of increases, so it's definitely lessened that decrease, but certainly overall, we're not seeing, you know, the growth that we've seen in the last five years in sales tax. The remaining of the increase really falls in utility tax. This has been a hot and dry summer, so that is increased water sales. My electricity bill was the highest I think I've seen in a, in a summer month. We have a small little house, so air conditioning is definitely making a difference in the Wu household. But there's also rate increases and significant increases in some of these utilities, you know, certainly our own utilities, you know, a five and a quarter increase, a percent increase for water, nine and a half percent for sewer and four point, four and a half percent for storm. Also significant increases from the PSC rates. So that is all contributing to pretty significant increases in utility tax. Do want to spend a little bit of time in the utilities. Certainly a significant portion of our, our budget, probably about 50% of the entire city budget lies right in the utilities. So really high level, looking at revenues for the three major utilities. No surprises, things are coming in as expected. Maybe a little higher on the water side just because of the, the hot and dry weather. About a million dollar increase to water sales so far through mid-year. In wastewater, we have about, about a 1.3 combined increase for lot and the city portion of the sewer bill. And about $160,000 increase for stormwater, all except for, like I said, in terms of the weather-related increase for water, all within expectations in terms of those rate increases that were adopted. Looking at the expenditures for the utilities, pretty significant variances. Water has about a $3.7 million increase through the mid-year. About 2 million of that is an increase to the one-time transfer for capital, so about 2 million again there. Have about a million, two or so in increased water meter inventories to kind of help deal with that heavy replacement rate. Within wastewater, about a $3.3 million increase through the mid-year. About 400,000 of that is the transfer of lot revenues to lot. Also have a significant increase to the capital, one-time capital transfer, about 2.3 million within wastewater. And a much smaller capital increase, capital transfer increase for stormwater, about 200,000 at mid-year. So do want to focus on the 2025, 26 financial outlook. You know, we did adopt the budget with about a 1.8 million dollar use of reserves or a deficit. So we have refreshed the, the financial model earlier than anytime I've been here. Think it's important to kind of get a quick glimpse of what we're, or preview of what we're thinking we're going to see in 2026. But do kind of want to walk through some of the major factors that we know so far that are going to impact the 2026 budget. We know labor is going to be an impact. This is a 10-year history. You saw this at previous quarterly reports as well as your council retreat, significant increases within salaries and benefits. We've said it time and time again, our most important asset is our, 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 our people, but it's also the most expensive. About what, two-thirds of all general fund expenses comes directly from labor. We are budgeted for about a $5 million increase to labor. I think it's probably going to be about 3.6, so I do want to share some good news. The bad news is we have about 28 or 30 vacancies that are running right now. So while we have that savings, that also means it's a little bit harder for us to accomplish what we need to accomplish on a day-to-day basis. Just kind of wanted to give some insight in recent past cost of living adjustments. Inflation has been running high through the, through the pandemic certainly and still continues to run high through the recovery period. But the good news is inflation is getting much closer to that Federal Reserve target. Not quite there, but you could see over this period that in 2026, we're going to have lower percentage rates in terms of cost of living adjustments. I do have the 2025 ASME COLA highlighted there, 3.22%. percent. That is going to be the retro amount that we are going to calculate for at least the first seven, if not eight, months of two thousand twenty-five.
I have a question. So in two thousand twenty-two, we did the four percent retroactive, right, for twenty-three, that we did in twenty-three, we didn't have as many employees as we do now. Is that fair? I think we've added somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty to sixty-five in that ballpark?
Yeah, give or take, yeah, definitely a significant increase in numbers.
Okay, so this three-point-two-two percent could be even more than the four percent that we paid because we have more employees?
Well, plus pay is higher, so three-point-two percent of the new number is higher than
than four percent of the old number. Yeah, and there's an additional sixty people to pay. Do we have any, do you remember what the retro cost us back then?
I don't remember. This year's settlement is probably about a million dollars, so, you know, half a year's half million. But I think you're, I think you're right as you talk through just the numbers back in twenty-two. I do think this year's, well, and I think the settlement in twenty-two was earlier than July as well, so there's a lot of factors that are going to change that number, but just certainly sure volume of employees as well as four more years of COLA in terms of the salary paid out, yeah, it's definitely going to have a bigger impact.
Okay.
Do you have a pretty good preview of what employee benefit increases are going to be for twenty-six? This is the first estimate that has been given by the Association of Washington City's Benefit Trust. Kaiser Medical has a increased range of between ten and fourteen percent. Regent's Medical is between eight and eleven percent. The PERS contribution, I'm going to come back to, I have a little more comments there, but the left contribution, this is law enforcement for us, unchanged employer contribution of five-point-three-two percent. Dental, the projected increase for both plans is between three and six percent. The PERS rate is, has been adopted by the legislature to go down to five-point-five-eight percent. This is down from, I think, nine-point-one-one percent. We are going to, at this point, suggest that we budget and keep that at nine-point-one-one percent. I think those rates are going to come back up. The main reasons for the decrease of the contribution rates is three factors. One is the assumption for interest earnings was increased, I think from seven percent up to seven-point-two-five percent. Just about everything we're hearing out there, rates are going to come down, so I'm certainly not criticizing assumptions, but I think in the long term, certainly over a four-year period, we're going to see lower investment earnings. Another action that was taken to contribute this decrease is the unfunded liability for PERS one was suspended for four years.
That's what I was going to ask.
So PERS two has been contributing to the PERS one deficit, so to speak, so that has been suspended for four years. I don't think that deficit is going to be solved in that four-year period, so I think that increase is coming back to us. And then the last factor I think that went into the decrease is PERS one was given increase, an increased benefit. That benefit, to pay that benefit, was amortized over a longer period than we've seen in past years. Past years, that increases have been amortized over a ten-year period. This time, it's amortized over a fifteen-year period, so just a longer period in terms to catch that up. So I guess what I'm saying is I'm expecting that this is a temporary decrease to PERS contribution. So in terms of conservatism, I don't want to go to that savings and then sometime in the future, we're going to have an increase, so I just don't want to get used to that savings, is would be our suggestion at this point. Of course, we're going to look at the budget, and overall, we may have to make kind of similar actions, but at this point, we do have the previous rate budgeted.
Have you had any luck explaining that to employees? The PERS one adjustments and the PERS contribution rate change? It's kind of complicated.
It is.
Employees are supposed to be notified when the rates change, and they just see that the employer rate went down significantly and they don't know why.
The employee contribution went down about one percent, if I recall, on July first, very similar reasons, I'm sure. But, yeah, it is, it does look like a savings. I mean, it absolutely will be in two thousand twenty-six, but again, I think it's a temporary savings at this point. Like I said, we refreshed the model earlier than any time that I can recall since I've been here, but kind of want to run through assumptions before I show you the numbers. In terms of revenues, sales tax for twenty-six, we're showing no increase to sales tax, but over the next five years, it's two percent per year. Property tax, the assumption for twenty-six is that we're going to add one-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollars in new construction. This is higher than what the model, you know, long-term of seventy-five million per year, but just looking at what construction did in the last eighteen months, I think that's warranted. The model also assumes that council is going to exercise the one percent increase per year throughout that period. Utility tax increase throughout that period is three percent. Other taxes is also three percent. In terms of expenditures, we actually did a very detailed projection for twenty-six, but looking long-term, the model assumes four percent per year for salaries, six percent for benefits. You could see we've had significant increases per year over a ten-year period, seven percent average for salaries, six-point-five percent increase for benefits over that ten-year period.
I'm back at page, I guess, on revenue. The other taxes, using three percent a year, and we're only using two percent a year on sales tax, the gambling tax is actually down this, according to the other. Why would we expect a three percent increase there?
It's mostly being OTACs.
Pretty much line up with sales tax usually?
It usually does, but what we've been seeing, and I'm taking a little bit of a guess, but I think the sales component, or not the service component of being OTACs has been growing faster than the retail. So I think that's the difference. Yeah, I think your point's well-taken, but we definitely need to keep an eye on that. I think at some point, it is going to even out, so we may have to look, you know, in this, even within this timeframe in terms of what being OTACs might do in a five-year period, but we're going to refresh this model every single year as we get more data, so we'll definitely react to what we're seeing in the current year.
Thank you.
In terms of the model, it assumes that we spend one-hundred percent of our budget, so it is a conservative look. We're probably ninety-five percent, I think, historically. Just other kind of inflationary rates, general inflation, three percent, city-paid utilities, four percent, and internal service charges, four percent. So this is where we stand as of what's in the two thousand twenty-six budget. Again, it includes all labor projections with a very detailed look. All revenue projections at this point are included in that number as well. So at this point, we're looking at a three-point, almost three-point-eight-million-dollar deficit. We have not applied any sort of reserves that we have been using in the past, but this is the revenues, what we know about labor in terms of our starting point. You know, like I've said in the past, I'm the first to admit that I'm much better telling you what happened versus what I think's going to happen, so in terms of accuracy, this is going to change. Certainly, long-term, we are going to react. This is not going to be our reality, that is not sustainable, so certainly want to give council and the public some assurance that this will not be our reality in terms of those deficits. We just couldn't possibly run a city based on that. But at the same time, I don't want to diminish that we have some challenges with our budget in terms of the cost of labor, the fact that revenues aren't growing nearly as fast as what we've seen in the past, so there is definitely, you know, in terms of the growth curves are definitely going up at different rates. Do you want to talk about some long-term considerations? We've talked about these in the past, but we have some more solid numbers in terms of what these impacts may be, so we have, certainly in next year, we have three areas that we've been watching very carefully. The first is Kewyo Park Phase One A. That park is under construction as we speak. We think we're going to have a operational park during two thousand twenty-six. And looking at very detailed budgets in terms of what we think it's going to cost to operate and maintain that park, it's about two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars. Think about things like labor, electricity, security, solid waste pickup, equipment rental rates, you know, we're going to have equipment to help maintain this park, so a pretty detailed analysis has been performed by our Parks Maintenance Department. For the police station, very similar exercise, took a very close look at what we think it's going to take to operate and maintain the new police station and the training facility. That estimate for two thousand twenty-six is about four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. And we'll point out that is lower than what we think's going to happen annually, annually long-term. This facility is going to be under warranty for a year, so think about things that need to be fixed, that isn't incorporated in there, there's just other things that we're not going to have to perform in two thousand twenty-six that we will going long-term. To help kind of put this in perspective, this is a very large facility. You know, the directors had the honor of taking a tour of that. I can't tell how many times I got lost and just not even know where I was at in the building, but, so it's the city hall and the current, the current police station, it's eighty-three-thousand square feet for those two buildings. The new training center and the new police station is about sixty-thousand square feet, so it's about seventy percent the size of the current facility, so pretty significant new square footage in which we're going to operate. I think roughly the amount, the cost for, to operate city hall and the police station is about one-point-two million, I think. So kind of putting that in perspective in terms of kind of, is this a reasonable number? And we absolutely think it is.
So if we were to subtract the current maintenance operation for the current facility, what would our number be after that?
That's a little hard.
We encompass it all together as one structure?
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be a significant decrease. We're going to have to keep, we don't, we're not even sure exactly what we're going to do with that building, so I'll kind of start there. But let's assume that we're not going to use it for any city operations, we're going to mothball it, we're going to block it off. We still need to keep the temperature at a certain amount in terms of just having it sit stagnant, so there's definitely still going to be costs, so I don't think there's going to be significant savings in terms of not having that in operations. We're going to save on custodial, that type of thing, but I also think there's, you know, a decent possibility we try to use that for operations. I mean, we have employees stacked on top of employees in here in city hall and trying to work, so, you know, we'll have those conversations at the staff hall, we'll certainly have those conversations with the council as to what we're actually going to do come mid-two thousand twenty-six with that facility. But either way, it's going to cost us some money, so we'll know a little bit more, but again, I don't anticipate that's going to be a significant savings.
Okay.
Troy, does the training facility and police station reflect the income that we anticipate from other jurisdictions paying in to use it?
It does not at this point, so.
Would it offset some of that?
It would. We're having active conversations with other area law enforcement agencies. I think anecdotally from the chief, there's a lot of interest, a lot of envy in terms of what we're going to have in terms of facilities, so without a doubt, I think we're going to have other jurisdictions using that, and absolutely, there'll be some cost offsetting there, and I don't know if the chief has some comments.
So we're hoping with the interest that we're looking at, I think a reasonable number, somewhere between ten and fifteen percent offset of maintenance costs. I think the city manager like it'd be a bit higher, but I'm conservative like Troy, so I'm thinking ten to fifteen percent.
We were able at some point to get state and academy there, like that we talked about, I know it's not, that would make a bigger impact on that, right?
Yes.
Significantly bigger?
Be closer to the twenty-five percent range. But again, we wouldn't be able to use the academy or be able to use the training center for four days a week during that, during those four-and-a-half, five months, five-and-a-half months. So I mean, if you have two training, that's eleven months out of the year, which is going to greatly impact how much we can use that training facility. And also, we're trying to work towards that direction, so I think we can make it happen quite effectively, it's just a matter of timing and usage.
Thank you.
In terms of updates on the public defense standard that was recently adopted, the good news there is we have the opportunity to have a ten-year implementation of that. The bad news is that's still eighty-thousand per year plus inflation for a ten-year period, so overall, that's, you know, going to be a hundred-thousand-dollar increase over time plus inflation, more than double than what we're paying now, but the good news is we get to ease into it, so to speak, but that's going to be a significant factor for us year in and year out for the next ten years. And really long-term, you know, we are working on RAC Phase Three in terms of design and opening and expanding that facility. In two thousand twenty-eight or so, the Parks Culture and Recreation Comp Plan, the CIP, has bought a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar-per-year maintenance estimate in that. So in terms of adding at least the two thousand twenty-six factors that we know we're going to have to address, definitely changes the model. That changes our starting point for the budget to a two thousand twenty-six, four-point-five million-dollar deficit, so we definitely have our work cut out for us in terms of two thousand twenty-six and then obviously in the next few years. Do you want to kind of summarize with the slide that the city manager presented to you at the first quarter report? Not a lot of changes here, I'm not going to go through that, I certainly couldn't be as eloquent as Rick, but, you know, very similar situation to where we were in the first quarter. Certainly a lot of uncertainty in the economy. We do know and anticipate a deficit for twenty-six. We did have a reset in sales tax, twelve months, twelve straight months of decline, but we did see the last two months having an increase year over year. But in general, we expect operational expenses to grow faster than revenues, so, you know, we do have a challenge in front of us. The budget's going to focus on really maintaining our core services, our level of service. You know, I do want to say, we've been here before. We took great recession and slow recovery, that, those were not fun. Proud to say that Lacey did it without significant cuts of service, no layoffs. That's certainly our goal again throughout this period. So, you know, we did talk, you know, at depth, in-depth at the council retreat, we have kind of a three-step approach in terms of addressing this. But overall, you know, we're going to continue to have these conversations, we're going to bring information to you and the public, but we're going to be looking at expanding revenues, we're going to have those conversations very quickly, in fact, I think you're going to have your first one next week.
That was going to be my question to you. We started talking about this at the retreat, but we've not, it's not, nothing's come in front of us again since then. We, I mean, the longer we wait, the deeper, the problem doesn't go away and it doesn't get better, we need to start having those conversations sooner rather than later, I mean. It really needs to be in front of us.
I can provide a little bit of an overview of what that's going to look like, if you don't mind, Troy. So we will be starting like Troy mentioned next week of starting that conversation, really laying out what that looks like, of starting with kind of taking a look at internal revenues, taking a look at maybe some more external-facing ones leading into September and October. So we'll be in front of council multiple times over the next couple of weeks to get information to the city council.
So this is probably the most serious I'm ever going to get on this council, because from the day that I got on this council, there, or can you go back to the one slide? This is what I said was going to happen. I said this was coming, and I said it at our first, the first retreat I was at, and I kept trying to preach it at the last retreat, and I don't feel like it was taken seriously enough. And we talk in generalities about, oh, yeah, you know, when things come, we'll have these discussions, I'm, I don't want discussions anymore. Hopefully, these aren't the numbers. Hopefully, it's half of that, but it still could be that. But I want to know what cuts that is, what cuts half that is, and I would like to have that before we get to two thousand twenty-six. And I would like to have that before we get to 2026 because I think we should have been way ahead of this. And I am very frustrated that I kept preaching that and no one wanted to have that discussion because people don't want to talk about cuts. Now we're facing $12 million in 2030, which is not that far away. So I really wish we had taken that more seriously. And I would like a better plan on what that actually looks like depending on how big a deficit we actually have moving forward. And that's all I had to say about that.
Thank you, Councilor Dunning. That's really kind of a good segue. We are working long-term in terms of investments in the community, in terms of economic development. You're going to have a discussion about revenues. You've already identified areas you want staff to focus on. Shannon's done some incredible work, gave me a lot of homework over the weekend in terms of review. So really impressed with that. We've also done an internal exercise. We looked at every single expense line item. And we do have suggested reductions within that. So yes, our number's going to be lower. I'm certainly not going to stand here and promise you that's going to be zero. But we have done absolutely what you have suggested. And yeah, very, very strong level of confidence that's going to be lower. But we're still going to have some sort of deficit to deal with.
So you'll be able to bring some of those in front of us in the next couple of months? So we can see like what expenses that we can.
It's probably going to come in, in terms of an update to this. You know, we, we looked at thousands of line items. It's probably not the level of detail that council wants. But we could talk in generalities in terms of what we looked at. Really, we called it right sizing the budget. There were things, there were line items that we hadn't adjusted upwards. But overall, it's looking like there will be significant savings there, so.
We, we need to see that soon, you know, as soon as possible. And this, we need to, this needs to become the priority because these numbers obviously are not sustainable. And we've done great. I mean, the city's been fiscally conservative for a really long time. And because of it, we've had great reserves. We don't have enough reserves to fund this through 30. I mean, that would, that would leave our bank account with nothing. So clearly, we have to make some changes on revenue and expense side. But I think we just, we need to start seeing that. That needs to become the priority in front of council, I think.
One of the things that I've been really wanting to see is us bringing new businesses to the city, things that we don't have, filling some of the holes that, that, you know, what do people leave this area to go get? And what do they leave to go spend dollars on? You know, there, there's, there's several segments that we, we just, you know, as a, as a city our size, we, we can't and have not provided this, this, and this for people to spend dollars on or attracted those businesses. I'm happy to see that some of our buildings are, you know, getting filled. See, the old Sears building is finally going to be filled. The, the Rite Aid building that was empty is, is, looks like it's under construction. I was disappointed to see the big lots leave, but there's a space there and opportunity there. There's, there's, there's so many things that people leave the county to go do and leave the county to go spend money on. And we really need to look at how do we provide those things so that the money continues to bounce around in our community as opposed to it leaving? And that's, I, I know I've been preaching this message for years and years. But we, we, it's, it's something that I, I think we need to take a little more serious look at, especially given, you know, these types of numbers that we're looking at today.
You know, keep in mind though, that big lots didn't leave because of numbers, money-wise. They left as a choice.
So I, I also want to, you know, I know we have, you know, an economic development department and, and a lot of what they do is focused internally. But I really want to kind of, I'd love to see them go to ICSC and, and see what they can bring back and, and that kind of thing. So even if we're, we're partnered with the EDC or, or whoever to, to make some of those things happen, I, I feel like recruitment needs to be bumped up the list so that we can generate some more revenue.
That was all I had up. Happy to answer any other questions or go back to any slides you might.
Okay, so next on our agenda is our second.
Sorry, if you mind, if I just want to respond that we've, we've heard you tonight and we certainly will be working with the city manager to get this information back to you in a timely fashion. And I do just want to recognize too, some of the comments that you may noted too of kind of the short term. And we're going to take a look at the short term, but not lose sight of the long term as well. And I know our community and economic development department is working on that with some of their economic development strategies. And they're looking at those types of leakages and trying to, you know, see what are some opportunities in there. So we'll be taking a look both short and long term in the near future.
We look forward to it. Second quarter?
Thank you again. You have the full details of the city's second quarter investment report. We made it a practice to come before this body twice a year. Policy only requires once a year, but certainly want to share information as the council needs it. Not a lot of formatting change in terms of what you've seen or the data that's provided. The report is developed by our investment advisor, government portfolio advisors. So you have a really nice market commentary, market outlook within the first parts of the report, a little bit of a strategic outlook included as well, as well as some advice in terms of how we position our portfolio. You also see, you know, the details in terms of the transactions and the changes, as well as the full listing of the city's core investments. The, in terms of the actual performance through the second quarter, we slightly outperformed our benchmark. So the, the core return was about 1.32%. The benchmark was 1.28%. We did have an unrealized gain included in the numbers for the report. That was about an $800,000 unrealized gain. Again, that's an on paper gain. We're not going to realize that same, I had the same comments about unrealized losses. We weren't going to incur losses. So same comments, and that's really a evaluation, again, evaluation, transaction. In terms of kind of market conditions and what we saw mid-year, a lot has happened in the six weeks since then, but I don't think the outlook's really changed in terms of the expectation. Back in mid-year, the assumption there would be two 25 basis point Federal Reserve reductions. I still think that is the current market assumption, but I think the market assuming that's going to happen sooner than later. So that's really just moved up. But I don't think we expect any more than two cuts at this point. In terms of our overall book yield for the portfolio, we increased just slightly, 3.64% up from 3.61%. So good news there. In terms of duration of our portfolio, we fell below the, the benchmark just slightly. So that's really how we gain yield is by looking at longer investments, you know, more investment earnings over time. There's no concern in terms of falling behind that benchmark. That's really more of a function of when investments mature and how that really just plays into that calculation. So no concern ever really right there at the benchmark. So in short, in terms of our investments, performing as expected, no surprises for the time being. With the rates still being elevated, we'll take advantage of that and earn a little more interest. But yeah, the expectation is that interest earnings are going to start to drop as, as rates decrease. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about what we're seeing in the report.
Hang on, nothing?
Straightforward.
Straightforward. I was, I think we were all expecting the Fed to, to either stay flat or, or drop a quarter. I was hoping for a quarter myself, didn't get it.
Been expecting that all year.
It wasn't, I wasn't heard about it because I've been expecting it, I don't know how long. So it does keep the interest, my interest earnings up. I enjoy that. But it, it, for, for everybody else trying to, trying to do something, borrow some money for whatever reason, get their projects done, whatever, it is just not helpful. I appreciate the fact that we're earning interest on it. I'm very happy about that. But it does stifle us in, in other areas and it's very disappointing. So who knows, in 60 days, we might get some, some good news. Business license code amendment, next item on our agenda. And Chelsea is here. Hi, Chelsea. Chelsea is our accounting manager.
Good evening. All right, so yes, I'm here to talk about a change that would affect LMC related to business licensing. To provide context, RCW requires cities that impose a general business license and BNO taxes to maintain a model ordinance. And so this is an update to that model ordinance, which is a means to ensure consistency across jurisdictions. There's going to be two amendments to the model ordinance and both will take place January 1, 2026. The first one's an update to the definition of service and retail related to BNO tax. For the definition changes, a task force made up of city reps and AWC staff has been created to review and make recommendations. They anticipate that work to conclude in September. The proposed amendments generated by the task force will be presented to council later in 2025 for consideration and adoption. At that time, staff will also bring forward, which you guys were just kind of discussing, information about opportunities to enhance or expand revenue capacity related to LACI's BNO structure. The analysis stemmed from your January city council retreat conversation and then the need to address ongoing expenditure growth and long-term fiscal sustainability. So the second amendment to the model ordinance is what we're discussing tonight, and that's an increase to out-of-city licensing threshold. So AWC collaborated with cities and business community to propose this update. Original feedback from business community made it clear that business license requirements in every jurisdiction, especially if it's just for one or very few transactions, was far too onerous on business owners. So the cities listened and the original threshold was set to $2,000 and that's what's in our current LMC. And so the proposal is that it be updated to a minimum of $4,000 to begin in, like I said, 2026. And I just want to highlight that is a minimum. You guys could choose to make that a higher threshold if you wanted to. The model ordinance amendment also adds in new language that was never there before that builds in a CPI adjustment every four years that would be applied to that minimum threshold up to a maximum of 5% in any one instance. The licensing threshold is a little different than that BNO tax definition one that I was mentioning in that we have an accelerated timeline. So we're bringing that one in particular to you tonight because we have to have that adopted and by August 26th because the state who we use for business license service has a system upgrade that they're doing later this year. So they need all that information from us early, which is why we'll have to come before you twice. So we plan to come to the next council meeting with an actual ordinance based on any direction you guys decide to give us tonight related to that threshold. So that's all I have.
Just one, one question. What is the, I mean, do, do you know what the difference in revenue is raising it from 2,000 to 4,000? Is there, I mean, guessing it's not a very significant revenue difference to the city?
Wasn't it like, like eight, 10 years ago or something like that that the 2,000 was established? Or was it? I think it was.
It was the mid 2010s. A lot of discussion about.
Well, the mid 2010s is when we had a lot of discussion at the council level in terms of what those licensing fees are.
We looked at revenues from a total of like zero to 4,000. We didn't necessarily look at it from the two to four, which is what you're asking about. But that, depending on if it's the $25 original business license fee or if it's the renewal, which is only $10, it would range between 16 to $41,000, 16,000 to 41,000, depending, you know, either all of it being $10 licenses or all of it being 25. So broad range, but that would be from zero to 4,000, not two to four, which is what you're asking, so.
The two to 4,000 is going to be a pretty insignificant different revenue change. Okay.
And what, like, and what if we went to six?
Ooh.
How about 10?
How about 10? I have those numbers.
You have the numbers for, I'm guessing?
I think four is really low. I mean, you're talking 320 dollars a month.
Since you obviously have the numbers for 10, what are they?
So 10, we actually have very few businesses kind of within that range. So it's really only an initial up to like $5,900 more of revenue impact from what I already stated. So it's pretty incremental compared.
So I know like the federal requirements for, you know, like the PayPal and, and some of those for reporting requirements just went from, I think, 5,000 to 20,000 where they're, you know, forced reporting. You know, because you're talking about the, the most low of low earners. It's just putting another, you know, another thing that stifles business is someone trying to get, get going. That's why I think the number is, you know, really low. And, and for someone who's just maybe a little farmer's market person.
Right.
So I'd be in favor of increasing it beyond that 4,000 personally.
A chance to grow?
Just to, to clarify, the model ordinance change that came from the Citigroup and AWC is for outside businesses only.
Right.
So, I mean, if you do want to talk about inside, we certainly welcome that in terms of what guidance you want to see. But currently, our code only exempts outside sign limit businesses that have activity of less than $2,000.
Could you give an example of what that would look like? What type of business that would be?
I think the most common example that we heard throughout that discussion was a, a delivery business. Maybe somebody orders a refrigerator from Tacoma, Tacoma business puts a refrigerator on a truck, comes to LACI and we say, well, you need a business license. So they have to get a business license to deliver that refrigerator. Another example we heard was like a, a home repair. Maybe there's an HVAC repair. Someone comes in from out of town. Now that business has to get a business license for that one repair. So that's, that was really kind of the conversation of the examples that we heard.
I was thinking like the night market, you know, how many people are coming from outside of our, our city to do business there? And, you know, I'm sure they're probably doing more than, you know, $300, $400 in sales, you know, a week at those sometimes. So I just, is that going to?
Doesn't affect sales tax. It's only affecting the licensing thing.
Correct. And then from a BNO tax threshold, it's 20,000 per year or 5,000 per quarter. So the numbers that we've been just discussing aren't going to impact BNO tax collections either.
So do you, tonight you need from us a specific number so that you can write this up and bring it for, for approval next week? Or do you, or would it be something where like if you said, hey, if we said, hey, can you, can you project us at, at six, eight, and 10 so that we can vote on one of those three? Next time we meet, is that something that would be acceptable to you guys? I, I don't want to put extra work on you. I'm just wondering.
Well, I hate saying no to an elected official, but you have to adopt this next week in order for us to meet on August 26th deadline with the state, so.
I need to give them a number in other words.
We could bring four different ordinances for your consideration.
No, don't, no, no. I'm, I'm just going to be in favor of 10,000.
Appreciate you entertaining that.
That's where I'm going to throw it. I think.
That's fine.
Just an even.
Nice even numbers, 10 is fine for me, 10.
So I'm hearing some consistency on 10,000. And I just want to make sure too that council's aware. They always revisit the topic too at a later date. We can meet this kind of deadline and threshold and then come back to it. But if there is consensus across the council for us to consider a higher number, we can.
When the difference from four to 10 was only less than $6,000. Yeah, just go to 10, make it easy.
That work for you guys? 10 wins.
We're begging out before you then.
Okay, so with that, you know, I, just because I wanted to say something real quick about our, our MPD effort. Can I say that here?
Point of preference, personal preference, I don't know.
Yeah, at this point. I think it would be appropriate to discuss, I'm, I'm not sure what you were going to talk about, but it's not a pending or a future ballot measure. So if you just had some general comments about what you've heard about the results, that would be appropriate.
I don't want to get any of us in trouble. The number that came up was, was 644, 664, which I wanted it to pass. I really did. And, and I understand, you know, the, where people are at in terms of finances and where people are at in terms of their current outlook of where we're headed right now in these next three, four years. We, 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 we gave the information that needed to be given. We made it all factual. We, 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 we gave the information that needed to be given. We made it all factual, no opinion. We kind of stacked ourselves up against our neighboring jurisdictions so that we could show that, hey, you know, we're one of the least, we are the least taxed jurisdiction or one of them in the county. But we, you know, we didn't get the public sentiment that we needed this time out. And I, I, I'm glad that we tried. I really am because our parks could use those dollars in revenue. We could, you know, potentially bond on, on those dollars in revenue. It just wasn't in the cards for us this time. I want to thank everybody for, you know, your support with it. Thank everybody for, you know, doing the focus groups and going to the meetings and, you know, we put the group together and, and made it, made a good effort at it. Maybe it wasn't the right election or, or whatever the case may be. But, but I, I do honestly believe that one day this will pass. And in that, you know, we'll be able to realize some of our, some of our future goals in terms of parks, recreation. When, when I saw the numbers, I immediately thought about Rackface 3 and that really cool presentation that they came and gave with the collegiate baseball field and, and how that would have been a revenue driver for, for this area a little bit more. But, you know, the people have spoken and, you know, we, we just honor that. So feel good about what your efforts were and what we tried to accomplish.
Did you have one comment?
Please, yeah.
I just want, this is really more for our park staff than anyone else. This comment is, I, I really don't believe that this was a commentary on our parks from the public. I really do believe in six, 14 years on this council, what I've heard from the public is how much they love our parks. This was purely a pocketbook decision. You know, I just, I just don't want staff in any way to be down about it because I think staff does a great job. We have a phenomenal park system and that may have been part of it too, right? People see how great the park system is and they're like, yeah, they don't really need more money. They're doing a great job. So I think this was just a pocketbook decision though. I mean, people, the economy is in a, in a strange place. People are afraid to commit more dollars right now. But I don't believe in any way it was at a referendum on our parks.
100% agree.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I want to concur that I'm so grateful to the staff of the city of Lacey that worked so hard on this to get information out in a very neutral and fact-based way. I know this is something that the park staff in particular have been working on since 2020, 2021. And my kids were disappointed when they heard the outcome of the vote. I'm super disappointed. But, you know, we'll see where we go in the future.
I guess I'm going to look at our attorney when I say this, but I approached Rick about the possibility of doing kind of an after action review on this to look at, you know, what we might have done differently, what we're hearing from the electorate, doing some precinct analysis. Because I've got some numbers that were given to me by somebody who does that kind of work that shows different pockets of the city where it was passing and, and pockets where it failed miserably. And what we can learn from this and how we might do things differently next time.
Is that okay?
Maybe I'll provide a little bit of kind of information on that. So I think you're absolutely right. You know, you can get the precinct information and we're, you know, waiting. We have official, unofficial. So we're kind of waiting to get official information. We have the unofficial. But we can certainly take that data and make sure that it's available to kind of look at, you know, what, what was the outcome of the vote? And certainly try to think about, you know, what are future considerations for the city moving forward? So we can get some additional information at a later date back to the city council. And we'll work with the city manager on making sure that we get that information.
Some of the feedback that I found kind of startling was a number of people who just weren't aware of this and then saw it on the ballot and it's like taxes, uh, no. But then they go, oh gosh, if I'd only understood what this was really about, I would have voted for it. And so there was a huge difference in the 2018 campaign and this campaign in terms of the amount of public engagement. The funding raised on a, you know, the group that did the Yes Parks campaign. I mean, they did a huge amount of work on this and, you know, as somebody who's done a number of campaigns myself, I mean, they ticked every single box. So I think you're right. I think it's, it's a bad economic climate.
My takeaway from this primary, right, selection was just sad. You know what I mean? I don't know what we have to do as a populace of a, of a voting block of eligible voters to get people to actually participate in the election, electoral process. That, that is the, the thing that needs fixing. You know, regardless of what the issue is or if a candidate made it through a primary or not, we need to participate in our government. You know, fix our house first.
Okay, well, with that, I just wanted to say congratulations to everybody for working on this. And you're right, we do have a fantastic parks system and a fantastic parks staff. And I was really just kind of hoping to give it an upgrade through this process and we will just have to table that for now. So with that, we've reached the end of our agenda and I will call this meeting adjourned. And as usual, keep it classy, Lacey.